Good evening, everyone. We're just getting ready to start here. Just want to make sure I can see everybody. Okay, look, so we have about 24 people with us and I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting. As you can see in the comment section, it asks that you would wait until after I'm finished with the things I want to share with you. Oops. And after I do that, I will be open to some questions and all that as well, too. So the purpose of tonight is really to make up for the fact that I did not present the financial report and the spiritual report as I usually do at all masses during a Sunday in November. And the reason I didn't do that is that we are limited in the amount of people that are there, but also because I wanted to share with you the new parish vision plan that we have been working on. And I wanted as many people as possible to be able to see and hear the presentation of both the financial report and the spiritual report, as well as the parish vision plan. So I'm going to go over those things. And then I'm going to finish up with talking about Christmas. The schedule we shared in the bulletin, there have been a few questions that have followed up, specifically just want to talk about not just the schedule, but how we are all going to need to work together to make those things happen. So just begin with with the prayer in name, the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen. Come, Lord Jesus, into our lives, into the life of this parish community once again. As we enter into this holy season of Advent, we pray for hope. We pray for the great gift of hope, so that we might bring into the dark times that we've experienced the hopefulness that can only be found in you. We begin this prayer tonight entrusting ourselves to you. We begin this presentation tonight, knowing that it is a part of good work that you've called us to do. Let me ask all these things in your holy name, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. In the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen. So I'm going to be sharing with you my screen a little bit, and part of what I want to do is help those who are unfamiliar with the our webpage, how to negotiate it and find the things that you need, because everything I'm going to talk about is there. So let me just do one thing here and lots of screens for me to be looking at. So hold on one second here and figure out what I just did. Okay, we are sharing the screen there. You see that, I think? Okay, hold on one second. I had it all. Where is this? Oh, boy. Trying to share my screen with all of you, and I can't seem to do that. So hold on one second. I may have to in some way leave the Zoom meeting, I think. Okay, well, I may not be able to do what I wanted to do. I don't know what happened. The first technical fail here. I was able to see screen sharing aspect of things, but it's not happening. I wanted to use Zoom so I could do that, and it is just not working here. Let me. Oh, there we go. Okay, sorry about that, folks. I now know what I'm doing. And I'm going to share with you our our webpage. So I just wanted to say again, as I said, I wanted to share this as a teaching opportunity for those of you who don't know how to use our webpage or where to find things. So you simply need to type in your web browser, holyfamilyparishny.org. And as you scroll down, you'll find most of the information that you would need on an everyday basis. You can click here to join our mailing list for our lecturers and extraordinary ministers. There's our ministry schedule. The weekly schedule is there. We're going to talk about this a little later, but the Sunday's mass save a seat registration is going to be very important. Our bulletins are here. But what I want to do now is as I scroll down to here, the annual parish report. And that's what I want to share with you right now. So just make sure you are seeing that. Okay, so when you click on the parish report, you're going to see what I presented just a few weeks ago, and I just want to touch on some of that. So I began by saying, you know, that this is a hopeful sign. After this year that we've been through, we have many, many hopeful things to see from our financial perspective. All right. So despite the restrictions of the pandemic, the weekly and holiday offerings increased by approximately $7,000, which was just a wonderful expression of your generosity, particularly we saw that in the final weeks of our quarantine period when we were having the masses out in the parking lot and then the first mass back in the church. We also were blessed with the payroll protection grant that helped us to make up for all of the lost fundraising. The PPP, which the payroll protection program was something by the federal government that was made available to all small businesses. Now, we are not a business, so to speak, but we do operate business, and particularly we employ a lot of people, both the parish side of things and the school. And the payroll protection grant, we were able to apply for and receive the money that we needed to cover payroll for eight weeks. That money went directly to payroll and to benefits. I know there were some questions about why couldn't the church make some sacrifices? Well, we did make sacrifices, but this would have been asking people, our employees, to sacrifice their paycheck. So the payroll protection grant helped us to do that, because a lot of our revenue comes from our fundraising. And obviously, we didn't have some major fundraising this year, the festival along with its raffle as well. And Camps Russ did open this summer, but at a very reduced number. And at this point, we have not received anything from them, because they operated at a tremendous loss this year, just to be open. The positives from that were that they were open and that there were no cases of COVID amongst their participants. And that's all good, a good sign for next summer. They're an important part of our community. They were founded here. They help us greatly with revenue. So we're going to pray for all the folks at Camps Russ that they are able to negotiate through this very difficult time and open again next year. The overall parish expenses were down by $200,000, mostly due to the fact that we didn't engage in capital projects that do need to be done eventually. The school's financial position was positive as most of the tuition was collected. We continue to offer education throughout the pandemic. In fact, our Catholic schools, ourself being one of them, were able to start within days with remote learning, and we continued throughout the school year. And therefore, we still provided what we had hoped to provide, and we thank all of our parents for being faithful to their tuition commitment. So that was collected. There was some fundraising that was able to occur before things were shut down, and the parish did not have to provide a subsidy again because of that PPP grant. We ended our fiscal year with the equivalent of 15 months of expenditures and reserves, and the school reserve is roughly the equivalent of their deficit in the current year's budget. So we submitted a deficit budget this year, which I'll scroll down to just right now, so you can see it for the school. That's about what we budgeted, 186,258, somewhere around there is what we budgeted for as a deficit this year. So we were able to do that, and the reason we had a deficit is because of increased expenses due to COVID. And certainly, having to have smaller classes, less people enrolled for various different reasons, some of it tuition, some of it because they were going to do at-home learning and chose to use the options of the public school. And our early childhood was down in registration, because people opted not to send their youngest children to school. So we hope that that will all change in the next coming year. But that did result in us having a deficit budget, which we've never done before, and we felt we could do that because of what was in reserves. Right? So the financial report is positive in light of what we have faced this year. What is the challenge is what's to come? You know, how are we going to meet our expenses in the current year? We are showing right now a slight deficit in the weekly offering. And there are a number of outstanding capital projects that need to be addressed throughout the campus. So in particular, you know, I ask for your support of the weekly offering and the Christmas cash raffle. We did not do our summer raffle, and we've opted to let the school run the Christmas cash raffle. There is information again on the website, which I'll go back and point to in just a moment in our bulletin. And that will help the school and therefore also help us. Because what the school doesn't make, the parish side will have to give over to the school. The school is the ministry, the parish, the school is the parish. So I don't want to make it sound like it's separate. But participating in that raffle is going to help and reduce the amount that we would have to take from the parish side of things to support them. So that's all there, and the financial report is broken down here that you can take a look at. This is all what was in the bulletin. And then our spiritual report. You can see the baptism number is quite low this year, 30 baptisms. Again, part of it was people staying home. We didn't do baptisms for several months. We hope to, you know, already see some improvement in that. Confirmations, we just confirmed here in the parish about 80. First communion, 78. Home visits, we still maintain them. And you can see all those there. Our funeral masses were down as well, because we didn't have funerals during those few months. We've caught up on some of them. Some people have opted just not to have a memorial. You can see the amount of students registered in the school and religious education, and many different things that are going on in parish social ministry, which operated so strongly during the pandemic. Sister Carol, along with Sister Beth, whom she lives with, really manned our parish social ministry pantry by themselves for many months and assisted a lot of people, and your generosity helped us to assist a lot of people. List of the parish ministries are all here as well. And I just also wanted to note, in particular, the great efforts that our youth ministry made. Our youth ministry remained connected through the pandemic. We celebrated mass with them via Zoom every Sunday night. They met periodically over the throughout the week, and they're just a fine community of young people, and they really thrived during that time. So I'm still with you. Hope you're all still with me. I'm going to just check and see if there are any questions so far. Okay, we got a few things there. Okay, someone needs to mute the others. There's nobody else speaking but me. So the echo you're probably hearing is from me or it processing over to Facebook. No one else is able to make any noise at this point. Okay, so I'm back on our our page of the parish webpage and back. So that was the financial report. Here you see the cash raffle right there. Okay? So you can make sure that you take a look at that. I'll just click on it for you, so you can see what it looks like there. There's the raffle, and everything is due back by December 15. You can print that out and send those back to us. So thank you for your support of that. I'm going to go back one more time. You can also download the form. Back to the annual report to discuss our parish vision plan. So I'm just going to pause for a second. Are there any questions that anybody has about the financial report? There's a little bit of a lag between what I'm saying and what you're seeing. So I'm going to just wait a moment and see if we do have any questions that come up financially. Okay. I'm not seeing any questions right now, and I don't want to sit here forever while waiting for them. So I am going to, you can ask them, and we'll go back to them in a bit. So back to where I am here on our annual parish report and our vision plan, which is right there under the parish report as well. So what is the Holy Family Parish Vision Plan? And what is it all about? And why do we get ourselves into it? You should have all received this brochure that is lots of layers. Just hold on one second. I don't know if you all are seeing the many multiple layers that are there, and I apologize for that if you are. Okay, seems we're caught up. All right. So the parish vision plan, you know, as we were going through this time of COVID, one of the questions on our mind was what's going forward going to be like? And, you know, what are we going to be able to do in the future? But even more than that, to say, we want to have positive things to think about. We know that this is going to end. And therefore, let's take the opportunity to say, where are we going in the future? What are some of the things we're doing great? And how do we want to plan to move forward? So the opening letter basically explains to you, you know, what has happened. That over the past few months, I've gathered with other parish leaders to discern our goals and our milestones, as well as any specific activities for our parish to engage in over the next three years. So it was our pastoral staff, and then we invited a group of parishioners as well to join us. And we spent three different meetings discussing what I'm going to share with you right now. And we had the guidance and help of a parish coach from our Sunday visitor. That's the organization that put this together for us. So we focused ourselves on three, excuse me, four pillars of parish life. Prayer, hospitality, discipleship, and evangelization. And we spent the time brainstorming together based upon those things. So here's our mission statement as a parish. Our sacred mission is to go and make disciples in a parish community where all are welcome. Empowered by the Holy Spirit, we are called together to worship the Lord, celebrate the sacraments, and we are sent forth to live and teach the gospel of Jesus Christ through education and service to all we meet. We meet. And then we broke it down to these values, which are prayer. You know, we want to deepen our relationship with Christ through intentional times of prayer. We want to greet and acknowledge the presence of those around us at Mass and other parish events. We want to promise and inviting environment to people to increase parish participation, and we commit our time in the presence of the Lord in adoration. Hospitality, I'll just go through that quickly, you know, cultural belonging. How are we doing that? How well are we doing with inviting people into our lives? When someone shows up here, do they feel welcome? Do they feel that they know how to get the information they need? Discipleship is our ongoing learning. You know, none of us, whether we're five years old or 52 years old or 86 years old, we are still disciples. We are still constantly at the feet of the Lord, learning and growing in our faith. How does our parish provide for that? And finally, evangelization, how do we take that faith out? How do we witness to the world? What does that mean? You know, does it mean we're standing on a street corner with a Bible in one hand? Or does it mean something more than that? All right, so that we took that, and we spent some time. And I'm just going through the brochure that you have, and you can find it on the website here as well, too. And we established goals. So here's the prayer. A goal was to increase mass attendance and increase our liturgical ministers by 10% each year to continue to grow and people who join us celebrating Mass and to take from those that are celebrating Mass to take a step and join us in our religious, excuse me, in our liturgical ministries. What are liturgical ministries? Lectures, extraordinary ministers of holy communion, music, vocalists and musicians, altar servers, and very, very importantly, ushers, greeters, welcomeers, whatever you want to call them. We've depended so much on them throughout this time. So the more we increase people attending, then we call on those that are with us to take that step and to help us to worship well. With that, we also have a goal and prayer to increase the number 15% of active households. So we would probably have about 500 or so really active households in our parish and really commit ourselves to daily prayer. I'm not going to go through all these points right now. You can see them. But so it's the larger parish community increasing our participation at Mass and the everyday, the domestic church, the home church, working on committing themselves to daily prayer. Hospitality is our welcoming. How do we, as I said before, how do we welcome people? We want to be able to strengthen three of the five already established hospitality ministries. So there's the festival. There's the greeting, I think, that monthly hospitality at Mass. There are, you know, other events that we have throughout the year, like Mother's Day and our parish, excuse me, the Fall Family Fun Day. All those things are moments of hospitality, and we want to, you know, kind of increase those things and boost them up so we have opportunities to socialize together. And strengthen, along with that, we have to get our message out. So we strengthen our parish communications through the development of a plan that incorporates social media, printed, and other digital communications. Okay? Discipleship, renew and reconnect our young adults. We've done a great job in our parish with forming young people in our school, religious education, youth group. Many of them, once they finish high school, are away from us in college, and we lose some of them. Some of them are remaining home. We want to be able to reach out to them and kind of invite them back to be with us. Because so many of them, maybe they find an active campus ministry where they are, but many who, especially those who stay home, are finding a disconnect. And how wonderful would it be if young adults could find themselves forming a community here in our parish? We also feel we need to follow up on our baptisms. You know, we welcome people, we baptize children, we have these young families, and we need to continue to engage them. So that's a goal there in evangelism, in discipleship. Finally, evangelization. We want each parish ministry, so that's all those ministries you talked about before, show a 10% increase in participation, because everything we do is evangelization, whether it be being a part of the caregiver support group or be a part of the widow and widowers group, the Amos group, whether it be religious education catechists, festival committee, all the different things that we have in the parish. Those are all opportunities to evangelize, to share our faith, to invite people into them. So the more we increase in the other ministries, scouting, all those things, we want to set that as a goal to increase participation in the various ministries, that it's something more than just coming to Mass on Sunday. And establish three to five regular efforts to reach out to the local community for evangelization efforts. That's beyond us. What are some things that we might be able to do beyond us? We suggest using the online program of Formed, and we want to establish other opportunities for parishioners to learn more about what evangelization is, something like inviting a friend to Mass and maybe some better communication out there on New Bridge Road. Okay? So that is the parish vision plan that I wanted to share with you. And if you have questions about that, please share them. What we're going to be doing is beginning to ask people, as you look at this, to see what you might be interested in being a part of. Which of these goals would you like to be a part of? The committee will continue to go forward along with our, those who have been part of our excuse me, our parish pastoral council. Sorry, I was struggling for a word there. Parish Pastoral Council, we have not met, obviously, during this pandemic. Some pastoral council may want to move on, but the whole purpose of a pastoral council is to do justice, to put a vision plan in place. So I would invite you right here now to contact and let me know. I'm interested in being a part and implementing this this vision plan. We're going to be reaching out to the various ministries as well, but it's going to start with just that the one person that says, you know, this appeals to me. I want to work on this goal. So that's the parish vision plan. And real important that we're able to continue who we are as a parish. All right, so I'm going to exit out of that. Oh, we're still there. Okay. Back to the parish report. There we are. So this is where you will be able to find the vision plan under the annual parish report, which is right here on our webpage. All right? So I'm going to just move on to our Christmas mass schedule and talk a little bit about that. All right? It was in the bulletin this past week. It's going to be in the bulletin every week, so we can make sure everybody does know what we're doing for Christmas. And you can find it right here on the website. Okay, I'm going to click on it. And the page will open for us, and this is what it looks like. So the first thing, this is all right from the bulletin. It's all there as well. This time of year is often marked by keeping a lot of traditions. Unfortunately, these precautions are causing us to cancel a lot of things that are part of our tradition. And we're doing all we can to safely celebrate the sacraments. That's our first priority and to keep our parish going that way. So we will not celebrate lessons and carols with the other Christian communities. We will not have our cocos and our Carol and Coco. Very sadly, we're not going to have the pancake breakfast. That's part of the reason why we're doing the raffle. We will hopefully come spring be able to do a breakfast event with all the baskets and everything else. So stay tuned for that. And unfortunately, also our point set of sale, which benefited Birthright. The point set of sale, we needed to make a commitment to Unbelievable in July. They wanted to know how many points that is we wanted, and we couldn't make that commitment. And now we're at a point where it would be very hard, given our given setup, to try to sell them. You know, you know what the gathering space is like. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that. We certainly invite you to make donations directly to Birthright. Given all that, we've had to adapt our Christmas mass schedule in order to provide more masses for people. All right? And therefore, this will require extra help. Welcome to seat to direct people. And here, right here in red, this is what's really important. If you volunteer to assist at a Christmas mass, you will have the opportunity to reserve your seat before we open seat reservations for all. To assist with masses on Christmas, go here to this link. I know some people said they were having a problem with it, but there it is. Okay, it worked. So it's an online form where we ask you to, here's your email address, your contact information, last name, first name, phone number, areas in which you can assist us, so ushering, which means welcoming people seating them, and the post-mass cleanup, which is something that can be very quick. We have some new equipment that's going to help us to sanitize quickly. Lectures, who are already trained, extraordinary ministers, again, trained and willing to serve. And then what masses are you available to assist? Now, you'll also see on here, as you go through the form, there are some extra masses that are hidden. Right now, you don't see them on the schedule, because I'm going to go back and go through the schedule a bit. But we are planning to be available to have extra masses on Christmas Day. So we will, if needed, will open up registration for a 10:30 mass in the school and a 12:00 PM in the school. So even though those masses aren't publicly published at this point, we're going to need some people to say, yes, I can help. Now, here's the thing with that. We, first of all, if you're coming to Mass, help. You're going to be there Christmas mass, help. The second thing is that the sacrifice that we might have to make, now the priest and I are celebrating a whole lot of masses over those days, is that we may need you to say, I'm going to go to Mass with my family, but I'm going to volunteer for another mass, because it looks like you need some help there as well. Now, one of the questions that's come up is when are we going to be able to register masses? When are you going to open it up so we can register for Christmas masses? I can't open up the Christmas masses until we have enough help. If we do not have enough help to safely have Christmas masses, those masses can't happen. If we do not have enough help to safely have Christmas masses, those masses can't happen, okay? So it's crucial that you do this, that you sign up to help us out so we know that we can make Christmas mass available, alright? Here's the schedule. We came up with a little bit of a different schedule so we could squeeze some more masses in, have enough time to sanitize. But we're going to still hold to the same numbers, alright? Right now, we have, the numbers are 135 people for capacity in the church. We haven't reached that point at any mass with the exception of Thanksgiving Day. So what we're anticipating is that we will have more than what we normally have, the new normal that we're in. So there's roughly about 500 or so people who are attending mass every weekend. So we believe we'll have more than that, but we will not have the numbers that we see in a typical year. That's what we're we're banking on here. So we've shifted some things around, and it was also important, you know, we traditionally have a four o'clock mass on Christmas Eve, very popular. 1,400 people between the church and the school every year at four o'clock. So in order to just move that out of the way and not have anybody be confused and try to come to the four o'clock mass, but also to give us some more time, given permission by the bishop to go earlier. This is what we've done for our Christmas Eve mass schedule. Three o'clock in the church, 3:30 in the school, five o'clock in the church, 5:30 in the school. And due to this adopted schedule and knowing that it might be hard to get people to staff the midnight mass, we did move the, what would normally have been the midnight mass or the mass in the middle of the night to 9:00 PM, okay, for this year. Everything else on Christmas Day is as usual. And but they, we, as I said, we will have masses scheduled in the school as needed. Anyone who wishes to attend Christmas mass must pre-register via the signup form. And I'm going to go back to our signup form in just a little bit, okay? So there's Christmas, right? And I can't emphasize it enough, we need your help, okay? I am going to, I think, end the Christmas mass schedule there. No, okay, that's what I want to do. I wanted just one more thing. Sometimes people are a little bit confused about how to sign up for mass. So again, folks, if you come to our webpage right here, HolyFamilyParishNY.org, you scroll down, I'm going to show you how to sign up for mass, okay? And I'm going to come back to the live streaming as well, too. We're going to continue that. But so we got down to this point, sign up for mass at attendance at Holy Family. This now is set up for next weekend. You can see our capacity is 135. Nobody has signed up yet for the 12 o'clock mass, right? But people have signed, and the five o'clock mass. But we have seen some people start to sign up for some of the other masses. So I'm going to be the first person to sign up for the five o'clock mass, just to show you how it works, alright? What I do, I clicked on this right here, 5:00 PM mass in the church, select, okay? I'm going to enter my name. And because it saved, it kind of all went there very quickly, but you would enter your name and some of both, my first and last name. Your name, your email address, your phone number. These things are all important so that we might be able to contact anyone who was at mass to let them know if we've had a positive case of COVID from someone who attended a mass. And we've already had to do that once, but we couldn't contact everybody. There were only about 80 people that signed up for that mass, and we had about 120 people at that mass. So it's really important that you put in all of this information. Then you would pick what, how many seats? We can go up to 25, we may reduce that a little bit, certainly for Christmas. But you select how many seats, so we're a family of four, and there you go, and then you click reserve seat. And here it says, you're right here, thank you, by participating in this signup form, you are helping to celebrate our masses publicly. Please bring your confirmation form with you to the church. So you're going to get something back in your email that you can print out, and it's easy for us. We we try to have the list available, sometimes they just don't, we don't have the opportunity to print them out before mass. So it's helpful if you bring your little ticket with you that says, I did sign up for mass, okay? You can print this right from this page, but you should get an email. I would have an email popping up in my mailbox shortly, and if it does, I will, here we go. Alright, there's the reservation form, okay? I don't know if you can see that, but there it is, okay? Back to, so with the other thing you can do now, I've come back and and I want to sign up somebody else. I didn't get enough people in. I want to do it for my neighbor who doesn't have a computer. Well, how do I do that now? This is all God. You see, this little thing up here is called, it's a refresh, reload the page. You click on that. And there you are, it's back again, okay? So those are the last things that I wanted to screen share. I'm going to stop screen sharing, you get to see me now. So let me just talk a little bit about this whole concept of signing up for mass. This has helped us, helped me to remain sane during this this time. Because we had no idea how many people were going to be coming to mass, right? How many people would be with us each and every week? Would we have to set up in other areas? The signup form made it clear for us right from the beginning that we probably were okay with not having an overflow spot. But who knows, you know, that might happen on any given week. So we need to know that. We need to know that, again, as I said before, for contact tracing purposes. If we don't know who's there, we can't let you know to just be aware that there was somebody at the mass. And the case that we had just a week or so ago, that person was wearing a mask, was distant from everybody else. And most likely, you know, that no one was, no one was infected by him. We don't know yet, it's still a week or so, but we're we're pretty confident that we've done okay. We're also, as we now get into winter type weather, you know, our instinct is to close the windows and all that. But we know that air circulation is very, very important. And I wrote about that last week, last week's bulletin. So you'll notice in the church, there are now little cards on on every other window that says this window must be kept open during mass, alright? So just like when the air conditioning might be a little cold, dress warmly for church. Please do not get up and close those windows. It's for our safety that we have those windows open. And if it's warm enough like it was this past weekend, we'll keep, we'll open even more windows. But at the very least, we have to have those windows open for cross ventilation to keep the air changing. And then at the end of every mass, we open the windows as well as we sanitize the surfaces. What we're learning from the CDC now is that the surface issue isn't as important as we thought it might be. The virus does not tend to live on a surface for very long. Where does it live? It lives, certainly if we're exposed to the droplets coming from someone, a sneeze, a cough, spitting, speaking, that that close contact, that's why we wear the mask. But it's also the most heavily transmitted way is aerosol, out or in the air. And it could, you know, and and that lasts for a while. That is mitigated by, again, wearing the masks, but also having good airflow and having those windows open. So that's really important that we pay attention to all that. It's very important that you wear your mask the entire time you're in church and you wear it over your nose and your mouth. I know how uncomfortable it is, but we have to have to do it, okay? And we cannot say that, you know, I'm choosing not to. And so far, we really have had very few issues where we've had to remind people. But please, the the one thing we are seeing is sometimes the masks aren't being worn properly. It's not doing any good if it doesn't cover your nose. So that's my little rant on that. I, this is what I wanted to present to you. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. I wanted to put it in a in a format that if people aren't here, they can watch it later on. I want to encourage us and and say that we are going to continue to do the best we can. We're not going to let this virus define us. We're going to continue to plan for our future, our hope, our life as a church. We're going to continue to spread this faith. We're going to continue to be the Lord's disciples. And our vision plan is going to help us to do that. And our first test of hospitality, you know, is going to be our opportunity to welcome people at Christmas. We want to give people a good experience. We want them, as we do every year, those who are not always with us. We want them to come on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and feel, I'm comfortable here, I'm safe here. I like this parish community, I want to be a part of it, alright? The last thing I want to talk about, and I should have incorporated a little bit earlier, but the issue of coming back to church. We know we've moved into another phase now, a phase now where we're seeing the infection rates going up. But the governor just said today, he talked about places that are doing the mitigating things, like schools. School is one of the safest places to be. The governor is reluctant to say positive things about the church, but you can find articles all over the place. Catholic Church in particular has done a fantastic job with keeping people safe. And over the course of all these months now, we haven't had any incident of someone becoming infected because they came to church. We trust ourselves to the Lord that that doesn't happen, but it is, it hasn't been happening. So for those of you who have been home, I challenge you to come back to church, especially if you're not monitoring yourself and limiting yourself in other areas. If you're going out to dinner, if you're going to the mall, if you're going to any, you're going to work and school, you're going out into the world. It's safe to come to church. Don't use this pandemic as an excuse not to come to church. We need the Holy Eucharist in our lives. Secondly, if you need to be at home, and many people do, the elderly, the health compromised, those who are just simply not comfortable yet, we offer the opportunity of live streaming. And on our webpage, I, that's why I said I should have mentioned it while we were there, but there are two little links there that say live feed, right? You go to live feed for mass, and every morning at 9:00 AM, Sunday to Sunday, 9:00 AM, we live stream mass. On Sun, Sunday itself, we also live stream, excuse me, on Saturday night, we also live stream the 5:00 PM mass. So there's two opportunities on the weekend to join us live. I, we had a whole lot of participation of people during the quarantine period. As we have come back to church, we know our numbers are low in church, but surprisingly, our numbers are also very low in the live streaming. So those who are not coming back are not joining us via live stream. Some are, some aren't. And so if you're going to be home, if you do not feel safe coming to church, if it's not a realistic opportunity in your life, please be with us via live stream. Please be with us to celebrate and share the Holy Eucharist together, praise, you know, and ask for the Lord in spiritual communion, alright? So I'm going to finish that, and I'm going to just look, I'm just going to pause for a second because, as I said before, there's a little bit of a lag, so I'm just going to look. If you have questions or comments, if you would please put them, type them into the chat right now. We have about 44 people, it looks like, here in the in the live stream right now. So if you have any questions, maybe maybe questions that might help other people at some other point when they watch us later on. So questions for anybody, if you wanted to go ahead and type them in. I still not seeing any, so I'm going to give you just a few more minutes. I've been going for 45 minutes at this point, I think, almost an hour. So nice little heart just came up, thank you, wherever that was from. Okay, well, as we wait and just see if there's any others that come in in the last few moments. Communication is very, very important. Communication between, that's why I did this tonight. So we have this information, right? I'm communicating to you, but it can't be one-sided. I need to hear back if there are questions or the concerns. And one of the things that is a stumbling block, and it doesn't happen so much anymore, but the issue of getting information to me anonymously. I can't do anything about that. You know, I've even gotten anonymous notes to say the microphone wasn't working at mass. We knew we had a problem, but I couldn't communicate back to this person because they kept sending anonymous messages to me. So please feel free, email me, send a message through Facebook, call the office. You know, we do need to hear each other. Okay, so we do have some questions. So Dennis just asked, will ushers have a list of names to check off? We are, we do have that ability. We have tried to to make that happen before each of the masses, Dennis. Right now, it's relied on me remembering to print it out. So one of the things I might be doing is asking our volunteers for those masses. To, I will give them the ability to print out the list themselves. Or I'm going to have to try to get somebody here to to do that a little bit more, because we do need to have that list available so ushers can check people in. The other thing about Christmas is we are limiting, we're going to limit the doors that people can enter. So in the church, everyone's going to enter through the gathering space, alright? And then in the school, we'll use the two doors in the front there. So there you go. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Pat, thank you, Jan, thank you, Rich, okay? Raffle drop off parish office, yes, you can drop off, you can drop it off right here at the parish office. You can mail it to the parish office, just put on the envelope that it is for the raffle. Mary Ellen, I know you're here, so if you want to just give an extra answer there, okay? Claire Patton, Claire, you asked, well, ushers, you asked to enforce registration of mass. What if someone is not registered for Christmas mass? We are, yeah, we're going to, we're going to ask for that, that help with that. Hopefully, with the overflow opportunities available, that's a place that we can direct people. But as we saw on Thanksgiving, and I did want to make this point because it was some of our regular people who showed up on Thanksgiving and said, I never registered for mass. Well, on Thanksgiving Day, we were full. And fortunately, because families sit together, it creates a little bit more space. We have a number of 135 based upon the fact that 135 people could fit in the church, sitting six feet feet apart as individuals. We know that we're able to get a few more people in when they are there as a family, as a household that lives together. So that does create a little more space. So sometimes we we might just ask somebody to wait and see if we can find space for them. Certainly, we're going to be around, the priests will be around. There are, there are leaders of each of the Zusher teams, but we are going to have to enforce that, alright? Mary Ellen says, yes, parish office for the raffles. Wayne asked, can an EM volunteer for more than one mass at Christmas? Absolutely, you can. You may choose not to receive if that, if you feel uncomfortable receiving the Eucharist twice, but you're welcome to. You've come for a different purpose, you're participating in that mass, so yes, you can. And Jen has just reminded us also to drop off the raffle tickets at the parish office by December 15th, thank you. So I, I thank Jen and Mary Ellen for their work on the parish raffle, the Christmas cash raffle. They've done a great job with putting that together. So I don't see any other questions. Again, feel free to email me, so I'm just. Yes, so together, let's, maybe just, we'll just finish commending ourselves to our Blessed Mother. So if you would just join me in in praying with our Blessed Mother. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and at the hour of our death, amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. So please sign up to help us out with those Christmas masses so we can open it up for registration, alright? If you sign up to help us, you're going to be registered for a mass. Help us with more than one mass if you can as well. And I think that's it. So we're going to end our time together, and I thank you also very much. Let's pray hard throughout this Advent season that we might be able to come through this process and continue to thrive in sharing the gospel and being the great Christian community that we are. God bless everybody, have a good night.